Okay, would you like to call this ready for the school board meeting in order?
No, Mr. Bell, Mr. Democia.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Sturgill.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First hearing of the public.
Good evening. E. Jean Rice. 1034 Y M L K Boulevard, 21st Street.
Can't hear you.
Can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
No.
Okay, maybe I don't need it.
No, just push it down a little bit more.
Now, something's wrong with the speaker. It's distorting.
All right.
I should just unplug it, really.
Yes.
Do you want to use mine?
It's the same speaker. We're on the same speaker, so.
Okay, my name is E. Jean Rice. I am speaking on behalf of the NAACP as well as the community. I was away at the state conference when I... We came back.
Jean, I'm sorry. Jean, keep talking into the microphone because on the public cast, on the public...
He says.
Right, that's our speaker that's not working, but he's still recording it, so you've still got to talk into the mic. They just can't hear you out there, but it records it.
Where is the mic?
The speaker right there. That's the mic right there in front of me.
Okay. My concern is allegedly, the Lorraine Journal on front page had my branch and me, I guess, quoted by Mr. Williams over there, that I had referred to President of Tony that he was a racist. And those of you that know me, that is not even a word that I use, because in the first place, if you know your history, why would I just call him a racist when we're all ebony and ivory? He's Italian, he's minority, we're all minorities. If we're not minorities, we've got minorities in our family. So why would I make that kind of statement? And I would like to know an answer to that, because you're not going to start playing games with the NAACP. We don't play. You better have your stuff, better have your eyes dotted, and your Ts crossed when you make a statement of some kind of thing that's not true about an individual. And I was not present at that meeting. I received a call from the paper. And I'll tell you one other thing. We're tired of the still the same stuff over and over and over. You guys, I don't know what to tell you to do. You're not doing what we asked you to do. And then, by you making that statement, guess what? You opened up a cag of worms. We didn't know that other organizations, you guys was buying tables and all that kind of stuff. You've never bought a table from NAACP, and I've been president of this branch 22 years, no, 24 years. Didn't know that little secret. It's good to know this. You have funds to buy for other people, you have funds to help rich people, property taxes when they buy buildings. But when it comes to the NAACP, because all of you sitting at their tables because of the NAACP, it's the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, that mean we have members of all races in this organization. We gave two kids scholarships, but you guys are not giving them any role models whatsoever. And the way that you guys disrespect the CEO, if you had listened to us, we wouldn't have had a CEO. But you, Jen, you don't listen to the community, you decide you're going to do your own thing. So from this day forward, I make a suggestion. If you can't do something good, you can't say something good, practice not saying anything at all. I'm Mr. T. I'm awaiting for reply.
May I say something? Something behind me? Think I need the mic?
It's not for the audience.
Okay, for the report. Okay.
My name is Jorod Lee. I have been here at this board working with Lorraine City Schools for over 30 years. I'm here today because I'm hurt and I'm angry. I see people here sitting on this board who might have supported for years, been out there, along with the NAACP. The NAACP is the national worldwide organization that is very concerned about the education and the quality education for all children. And I thought that's what we were all about here in Lorraine. I thought I would never ever see or hear from the gentlemen that I heard. Jean is a baby, but I was leaving the hospital, life care putting me in there, then I look in the box and I see the headlines, that you would not support the NAACP. I don't care about your personal feelings, where they are as the resident and chairperson of the NAACP Education Committee, what your personal vendettas are or how you feel. It does not belong here, not with my children. They see, these babies out here need an education, they need to see people who have integrity and not the indebtedness against one another and doing things. I'm very disappointed in you, in you four, there's only one here, and I have been supportive in, you know, of all four of you, all down through the years. Well, it just ended today. It just ended. You no longer have it, nor will I ask other people out here in my community, make the phone calls I would make to ensure that everything was going to be all right with you guys. You just slapped Dr. Martin Luther King in the face, Roy Wilkins, Rosa Parks, my uncle Nathaniel C. Lee, who was 25 years. You see, I'm one of those children out of Mississippi who had to sit in a one-room school when I first started school. I worked with my uncles to get NAACP literature. They put it in the tires of our cars to go back to Mississippi through Louisiana and Missouri. Yes, we smuggled it in there, and I was there. I'm one of the children who came out of the South with my parents in the '40s. My uncle who could not teach school because he was black here in the state of Ohio. But he rose up and went into the steel mill and became an international teller for the United Steelworkers of America. He then became president of the State of Ohio NAACP. We worked, we marched, and I, and my family, and you smacked us all down. You have no rights, and had no right, to say that you would not support the NAACP, because when you said that, you let me know you're not supporting me, and you're not supporting the children of this district. Because we do have the funds for those scholarships, and we give them those scholarships. And if you don't owe anything else what you owe, you owe the NAACP an apology for that statement that was in the headlines, that the Rain City Board and School did not support and does not support the NAACP. If you have something you have to say against an individual, then you take it and handle it that way. But you have no right, no right whatsoever, to slander the name of the NAACP or have it splattered over the paper in that context. That's all I have to say to you. And I'm sorry, and I'm going to leave you, and leave you with that, that you owe the NAACP an apology. And if you have any more integrity at all, you would give that apology. And let's stick to handling what's with children. The other issue I have here is with this and the distress commission. Why do we as a community have to compete against having two meetings at the same time on the same day? It is wrong. Get in your heads, we're concerned about the kids, be concerned about the kids and what we have to do in this district to see that they have the quality education that they need and they deserve. My baby's out there in trauma, and y'all sitting up here acting stupid. Now, and I'm sorry to don't like what Mr. Lee said, but that's how I feel, and I am hurt, and you owe me an apology. And you know you do.
My name is Mike Gergli. My wife and I own Gergli's Maintenance King on Broadway. Been here in Lorraine for over 30 years, since about 1985. Moved a couple times down Broadway and currently do business with Lorraine, but it's on a very limited, and it's like beating our head against the wall. Guys currently buy majority of your stuff from out of town, it's not local. You think being a local business, you'd get some reciprocation and trying to get none of that here. The school has bought stuff from us, but it's on a very limited basis, and I'm asking for the board's help. We're here, we have about 85 people that we employ through cleaning and supplies. Our wages are in a $12, $13 range, is what we pay our people, so it's not minimum wage jobs. But I can't seem to get support from the schools here, and I don't know why. We're competitive, they have a relation, they feel they're better to buy it out of Medina instead of supporting local business. And I'd like to know the board's feeling on that. Tony knows me.
Things have changed in the district, Mike, a little bit, so the one thing I can say to you is that there is a distress commission in the CEO that oversees much of the operations. Those are the folks you might want to talk to.
I, yeah, I didn't, I was talking to somebody different, I got that, but.
You want to talk to Jeff Hawkes? You want to talk to the distress commission? You want to talk to the CEO? When it comes to operations and spending, so Operation One.
And that's fine, that's why I'm here. I'm here to find out where I need to go.
Absolutely.
So it's Jeff. Basically the CEO, right? Is that where I'm going?
Yeah.
You can also send some stuff over to me and I'll think I'll look at it.
Well, I've got, I've got some flyers and I've got some cards and I've got some basic pricing on just things that they had bought in the past.
Let me take a look at that, because I do have, I have some discretion, being in the position I'm in now, to cross compare and make recommendations to departments and things like that. So, yeah, if you want to leave it with me, we can touch base afterwards.
I'll leave you some and I'll touch, I'll stay here, but I'll leave you a couple copies.
The reason I'm here is my girls go to Admiral King, and I can't seem to get an answer from the CEO. In the three weeks of school, they have been taken out of their class three times. I'm sorry, my name is Courtney Nizario. They've been taken out of their class three times. My fifth grade daughter had a child destroy the room, broke all their pencils, broke books, threw notebooks everywhere. My kids were sent out, my daughter was sent outside to the playground for at least a half hour, she estimated, she's fifth grade, came back inside, sat in the hallway for another 20 minutes while a kid had a temper tantrum in the room, destroyed everything. So we're taking my students out of the classroom for the streets end. Third grade, two incidents, the kids are taken out of the room and put into the other third grade classroom. The second incident, the teacher was actually hurt because we're allowing these students to have the, we're allowing the students to have these temper tantrums in the class because we're allowing them to keep going. And the teacher was actually physically hurt from the student. None of this is in the paper, of course, because there's no problems in the school according to Mr. Hardy. I have called numerous times, I can't say I did get a call back today after calling four times and leaving messages. But yes, this isn't fights happening in their classrooms, but to me, this is just as bad. My kids are being pulled out of school, so they're not being taught. Another girl in fifth grade screamed to the top of her lungs, my daughter says at least three times a week for at least 20 minutes, and they let her do it. Now, mind you, she is disrupting four classrooms, the one across, they can all hear her for 20 minutes. So is my daughter learning? No, she's not. She's just listening. She's not even in her classroom, she's in the other fifth grade room, but she's listening to screaming, and we let them. My third grade daughter, yesterday, Friday, another girl screaming, we have to let them let it out, is what I was told by the principal. So they had to have circle time. So again, or circles, not circle time, circles, in third grade, they're taking time again away from learning to ask how it makes them feel. So they're asking the kids in the class, how did it make you feel when she's yelling and screaming so we can't go on with our lesson? Instead of removing her from the class so that my kids can learn, we're now letting, and the kids, of course, say, well, I'm upset we couldn't finish the story, I couldn't, I, we can't go on with the lesson, and she's screaming, I don't care how you feel, I don't care how you feel. I mean, they're doing circles in my seventh grade daughter's class. How this is helping my kids learn, I don't understand. And the reason I come here tonight is I've called the CEO's office and they can't seem to help. And I know that this isn't exactly a safety issue, there's not fights happening per se in an elementary school, but this to me is just as bad. When the teacher was hurt because another student was kicking other kids so bad that she had to detain him, and then the teacher was hurt, that's when I have a problem. If one of my children are hurt because we're letting the kids just have these outbursts in class, something has to be done.
Who's the principal of the area?
Ms. Witt.
Who?
Ms. Witt.
Can I talk to that principal?
I'm sorry, I have, and the principal is, I mean, I have a very good relationship with her. She's actually, I was on the committee to, I've tried to have an open mind the whole time. I was on the committee chosen from the school to choose the principals, or to choose the principal we thought would be the best fit for our school. I was one of the ones, she was the principal I chose. And nothing against her, but I truly feel that she is told, I mean, the answers that she gives is, I am sorry, or I thank you for, thank you for that feedback that helps us. But I'm not given an answer as to why. Mr. Hardy called me back today because I have called so many times, and I pretty much lost it today when I called, after watching his town hall meeting, because I couldn't go to the town hall meeting because my school, the girl's school had planned a meeting at the same time. Well, of course, I have to go to my girl's school meeting first, so I called him, and his answer was the same thing, thank you for calling with these concerns. He's supposed to call me to schedule a meeting, but if that will happen, I don't know, but I get the same answers, thank you for calling with these concerns, or I got the answer three other times when I called but never received a call back from the secretaries. We have to give them time, it's the beginning of the year. We have to give them time to work things out, everybody's new. So we're giving them time to work things out at the expense of our students and their learning. They should have had these things worked out before my students came, and they're not. Thank you.
Admiral King Elementary. And it's really not the principal, Nizario.
No, it's not, and that's what I said. I know it's not. Me and her have agreed, and I took what her answers to me. I know it's not her, I work with her with the PTO, and I know it's not her, so I don't mean, I didn't even want to bring her. My reasoning is that I'm not getting answers back from the board office. I went as far as calling the Gail Manning's office, because they wouldn't give me answers. You know what they told me to do? They told me to call the distress commission and gave me the 2333-2271 number, and I told them, I've called them and have not received four callbacks.
Yeah, that's a major problem, and what I can tell you is, all I know is that the district has had policies in place for decades that were designed to keep children safe, and they've worked for the most part. And currently, under this administration, they've scrapped those policies, and what they've done is they brought what they call a restorative discipline, which, this is a safety issue, to be honest with you.
It is, it truly is.
But it truly is.
Right, exactly. Yeah, it is, and that's what I said, when they, when I heard that the teacher was hurt, that's when I was, I was, I mean, to not want to send your kids to school is a terrible feeling.
Discipline plan is failing miserably.
Exactly.
It is putting children at risk.
Every day.
As a board, we are having some deeper conversations about that. We are limited to what we can do, but we are having some deeper conversations about that. So hopefully we can help at some point in time.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm Keith Tressel, and what I come here for today is, there's a piece of land over there at Lakeview Elementary that.
Can you speak up? I can't hear you.
Yeah, there's a piece of land over there at Lakeview Elementary where the school was tore down, I think in 2011, and it's just a piece of land. Well, July 14th, my wife was killed in a motorcycle accident.
We can't hear nothing you're saying.
July 14th, my wife was killed in a motorcycle accident, and the lady that pretty much ran us over was, was high on Xanax, amphetamines, all kinds of drugs. And my wife loved dogs, and I would like to have the school board donate me that land so I can build a dog park there at that school, at that piece of property. Right now, it's just an empty piece of property sitting there doing nothing. And I mean, I'm determined to put a dog park in Lorraine somewhere, because for one, Lorraine don't have one, and another, I mean, it's in honor of my wife, who, like I said, she, she passed away in my arms July 14th, and she did a lot for the community, as when I coached football at Admiral King South Y U and Lorraine High for 15 years. And she was the one that every Friday cooked the dinners for all the kids, and she put in her time, she supported me as a coach. And like I said, I mean, that piece of land is just sitting there doing nothing, and I would appreciate it if somehow it could be donated to me or to somehow get it to where I could put a dog park. I'm not asking for no money for the dog park, the dog park will be done by donations, fundraisers. I got the backing of Chase Rittenhour, our mayor. I talked to him Tuesday. I got the backing of Local 2000, UAW, that's who I belong to, our president, Billy Samples. I got numerous people willing to help, willing to donate, willing to just get it done. And I want, I would really, you know, I want it done, I'm determined to get it done in honor of my wife. She loved dogs, and I would, you know, like I said, that piece of land is just kind of sitting there doing nothing but just a vacant piece of land right now.
Keith, first, extremely sorry for your loss, I can't imagine how difficult a time it is. I can say that as a board of education, we did discuss this, I think, two meetings ago. Yeah, it was at Glassman. And one of the questions was whether we still own that property or not, because I know that we have been selling off some of our properties over the course of the last year and a half or so, and the answer to that question is that we currently still do own that property. I will also tell you that long ago, that piece of property, we were in conversations with the city of Lorraine and donating it to the city of Lorraine's for Metro Parks purposes. Not sure where those conversations went, but I understand you had a good conversation with Chase about this, and, you know, like I said, we're limited in what we can do here, but I gather, and I can't speak for everybody else, but there was quite a bit of support for your initiative at our last board meeting and our conversation, so, you know, I'm not sure what we can do for you, but we can certainly ask some questions and try to help you out in some way.
Yeah, I really appreciate all the help I can give from you guys.
What I had is that you could maybe the API, or you give with the Metro Parks, and see if you can partner with them.
Yes.
We've moved from nonprofit to nonprofit, we can have a better opportunity working with another nonprofit in that kind of an endeavor, so I think it's a great idea. Like I said, very sorry for your loss. I've known you all my life, all your life, and you're Lorraine through and through, and very sorry. I was devastated when I heard that news.
Thank you. Okay, I need a motion to approve or amend and sign the minutes from last board meeting held September 7. Discussion?
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Democia?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Okay, what I'd like to do now is suspend the order of our meeting and ask for a motion to go on executive session for item F, special details of security arrangements where disclosure of the matters discussed might reveal information that could be used for the purpose of committing or avoid prosecution for violation of the law.
And this will be a fairly brief?
Fairly brief, very brief.
Motion to go to executive session is.
Discussion.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Democia?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Okay, back in session, and what I'd like to do is first welcome Chief Rivera and Officer Ruben Figueroa that are here today to join us, as, you know, we've expressed some major concerns over the course of the last few weeks about the safety in our school buildings, and I know that the media has covered a couple of those articles, and, you know, this is a major concern for us, as we just had a parent talk about a safety concern right here at the board meeting, right on time. But first, let me welcome Chief Rivera, and again, we value the partnership that we have had for 20-some years with the Lorraine Police Department and Chief Rivera and his officers, because, you know, we should lean on them for guidance in the safety area, because that's what their expertise is. So we thought it was important to have this conversation, you know, publicly, to discuss some of the concerns, and hopefully the district can make some changes moving forward to make our buildings safe again. But Chief, let me welcome you first, and, you know, again, this has been a major concern, and, you know, your insight is obviously extremely important to us, so that's why we asked you here tonight.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me okay? Okay. I was asked to come and talk about what's actually going on in the schools in terms of fights and violence, and I didn't read the complete articles, but I did read enough to realize that there's a conflict, even in terms of are there fights or are there not fights? You know, is it a dangerous situation, is it not a dangerous situation? And I'm just going to talk to you from our perspective. I can tell you that in speaking to our school resource officers, they said that this year is completely different than the last few years. Anybody who understands the history of the Lorraine schools knows that we had a gang problem years ago. We had a serious gang problem, and we've gone through years where discipline or lack of discipline was a serious problem. And I spent, there was a time, maybe six, seven years ago, I'm not sure exactly when, when I spent a couple weeks in the schools. And right in front of me, what I saw was a lot of fights in the hallways, what I heard was unbelievable profanity in the hallways, and it seems like once the community got involved, and if you remember, there was a series of community meetings, there was a citizens group who got together, worked with school officials, with law enforcement. Uh, there was a citizens group who got together, worked with school officials, with law enforcement. Everybody got together and decide, made some decisions that I think changed that environment in a very positive way for a long time. We're kind of back in that same situation. We're not, it's not as, near as bad as it was back then. But I can tell you from our numbers, and I don't want to really get into a dispute with the other people about what the numbers are, but we showed in the first couple of weeks, we had 21 fights. And that was 21, that was fights in the school, at George Daniel Field, on Ashland Avenue, right immediately after school. That was definitely school-related. Um, I've also heard that, you know, it's the problems in the community that come out into the school. There's some truth to that. But it's also true that a lot of the problems begin in the schools and then goes out to the community. And that's why it's so important for everybody in the community, including the police department, including the schools, including the board, including the school administration, and citizens, to get together and, and quietly resolve this issue. You know, I try to put myself in the place of these kids that go to our Lorain schools. And they have to be tired of listening to that they're going to a loser's school. A school that are flunking and failing. Imagine what it's like to try to go, to say you're going to a school system that is failing, and now you're reading in the paper and watching the news that they, there's no student supervision, that there's fights every day. You know, if, we got to get a grip on this as a community before it gets way out of hand. You know, I understand the concept of restorative justice. I believe in it personally. It is, it's basically saying, look, there's other alternatives other than arrest and detention, the old way we used to handle problems in the schools. There are so many other resources and, and, and things that are available to help out kids. The problem with that is, it's like community policing. Community policing works. But before community policing can work in the neighborhood, you have to make that neighborhood safe. You have to get rid of the violence, you have to get rid of the gangs. And then you can have that conversation that's so important and bring everybody into, you know, the conversation, so that you can then resolve the issue. But just like you can't do community policing without making it safe, you also can't have restorative justice in the community or in the schools until you make them safe. You know, if you're afraid to go to school because you're going to get beat up, then that, that affects your learning. If you're constantly reading that your school's a failure, that affects your learning. And, um, so, obviously, there's issues that we can all work on. Um, but the first one is that you have to truly acknowledge what the problem is. And, and the issue is, right now, there is a problem. We have three, three separate gangs that are operating within our city and our schools. And it's a continuation, generational thing, believe it or not, from the old days when you had the MOB on the west side, on the west side, and you had the Dirty Thirty or the South of Lorain. And that's continuing. It's a different group of kids, but they're being, they've been influenced. And, and they've lost hope. Yeah, and so they're looking for alternative ways, uh, to, to, you know, to express themselves. And, um, and now there's a third one that's new for us. It's, it's called the cash-out crew. And, uh, but those are all things that we have to, it's still just in the beginning stages. It's certainly not at the stage where we can't resolve it. But we're not going to resolve it if we politicize the issue, if we're not truthful when we talk about what the issues are, and if we don't acknowledge it. And, uh, because I can tell you that I'm out in the community quite a bit. And I've never heard, it's been a long time since I heard lots of parents say, I'm pulling my kids out of Lorain schools. I haven't heard that for a long time, you know. And, uh, and it's kind of sad, because about a year and a half ago, you know, whatever it was, maybe two years ago, we actually went the whole year without one single call at the schools. We never got called the entire year. And we can get back there, because there's a lot of things that are going on that are, it seems like everybody wants to help our kids. You know, we got the new school buildings. Everybody wants to be positive. Everybody wants to help our kids succeed. And we can do that. But, um, but we have to be honest about what the issues are, you know. And, um, uh, and it's important that we not politicize it. And I would personally like to see, as Gene knows, I prefer to talk behind the scenes privately, where you can have honest-to-goodness, face-to-face conversations where you just speak the truth. And then you sit there and, and have the courage to sit down and resolve the issue, as opposed to doing it in the newspapers or on television. Because all that does is bring more disrespect, you know, disrespect for our school district and our kids. And, um, so, and so I guess what I would offer to you is that I am more than willing to facilitate that discussion. I'm more than willing to, to be the host, offer a place to do it, and to have private conversation where everybody sits at the table. But it has to be everybody. It has to be the school administration. It has to be, you know, certain members of the community. It has to be the police department. It has to be the Board of Education. Everybody needs to sit down and just have a good, honest discussion about what are the issues and what can we do to resolve it. And, uh, we're willing to facilitate that and host it, um, because it's that important to our kids, you know. And, uh, you know, a couple of years, just in the last year or two, when we built this building, I was so optimistic about where Lorain was going and where our kids, what they had. I was happy to see them for once have a building they could be proud of. But they can't, you can't go back to a situation where they feel unsafe down the hallway. So when you're walking down the hallway and you hear MF this and, you just can't have it. You know, they need structure, they need boundaries, and they need tough love. That doesn't mean that you, that doesn't mean that you arrest them and detain them. It means that you just give them the individual attention and the love that they need and the respect that they need. But that may, I hate to say it, but sometimes that means removing them from the general population for a while until, um, you know, and so you, student supervision is really important to what we're doing. And the other thing I can't have, I really can't place officers in a situation where they're not going to be supportive. You know, because what happens, here's what happens, you get, you, you have extremes. So we think, well, you know, the kids will react better if we just, you know, if we just interact with them as, as peers. And, you know, we slap five with them, we, you know, we uplift them that way. But if you're doing that while they're failing, or while they're beating up somebody, or they're carrying weapons, you're, you're really just not creating a really good situation. You just really aren't. And, um, and I think kids operate different, better when they have some boundaries and some structure. And, um, and but, but we need to, so what happens is, the other extreme is, okay, we're getting a lot of bad press, so hey, cops, do your job. Arrest these people. Just arrest them. Arrest them for trespassing. That's what we were told. Arrest them for trespassing. Arrest them for this. You're not helping them either. You're giving them a criminal record. We're not the answer. The police department's not the answer. You know, parents, faculty, staff, the community, that's the answer. And it could be done without giving them criminal records, you know. But, and what I'm afraid of, we're going to do that, and then we're going to get into a, a fight with one of the kids, somebody's going to get hurt, and it's going to be that cop just overreacted, you know? We don't know why he did that. And I can't place my officers in that position. So, I'll be honest with you, it was to the point last week where we were actually having discussions about whether we should have officers in the school. You know, and, um, those are ongoing conversations. I'm actually meeting with the CEO, Mr. Hardy, tomorrow morning, you know, to have a discussion. But, um, you know, I, I just can't put officers in that position, you know. And, um, so, we want to help the schools. We're dedicated to the schools. You know, that's why we painted a couple of our cars the school colors. That's why we, you know, you know, bought t-shirts for the freshman kids. That's why we gave med scores for the football games. We believe in these kids. We want to see them succeed. But we don't want to get caught up in a lot of this publicity and this public debate. We want to have just a, a conversation privately with the people who matter. And let's just be honest with each other. Let's, let's define the problem for what it is, and then let's just do our best to do what's best for our kids. Does that make any sense? I have a minute.
Questions for you, Chief?
No, first, thank you. Because some of us have had individual conversations, but we wanted to hear the interpretation as a board and as a community. And we respect the relationship we've had. One of the things that I've shared with folks is, some people give you advice. The police don't provide the district with advice. They make recommendations from their perspective as the experts in safety. And so, um, it was encouraging to hear that you are having those meetings and that there have been some change in, in going forward over the last week or so in terms of how the interaction is going with the administration on these policy issues. But again, and we were very intentional. The reason we went to executive session is so that we could hear as board. But we don't want, there's a lot of politicization of things that are going on between the board and the CEO, and that has its space. In this place of safety, that has no place. So, everyone's concerned about safety, and though we don't have any authority over certain aspects of policy, we do, as elected officials to this district, have a genuine concern and as a community on how public safety works in our school buildings. And so, uh, we know that resource officers, um, we appreciate what we've established. And, um, even, I think it was your recommendation years and years ago that we created our current safety officers. And so there's been, there have been enormous things you all have contributed, because some time ago, the stigma of Lorain City Schools as not a safe place was huge. Um, it wasn't all real, but as long as that was a perception, um, there were folks who did not want to have their kids in this district. And so there was a lot of energy that went into changing that perception of the district. And those things can, um, can spiral and reverse themselves really quickly. And, um, and so we don't want, first, we want to have a safe place, and secondly, we don't want to have people leaving the district because they're in fear of the safety of their children.
I agree.
Thank you.
Any others? All right, Chief.
Yeah, you know, I have Officer Figueroa, who's actually the school resource officer. If you want any specifics, he can tell you what, you know, his perspective is. He's, uh, he's in the schools every day, you know. And, yeah, just to let you know, when we pick our school resource officers, we pick people who don't really believe in, in arrest. And as, as a, as an answer to most of the problems that occur in the school. We don't believe that's the, that's the answer. So we kind of handpick officers, and, and that's what we did when we picked Officer Figueroa. So, he's there every day, so if anybody has any questions, he's here to answer them.
You take the good one, because he does great work. We appreciate that.
I would like to hear some information from Officer Figueroa, because he's the one that's actually in the school.
Yes, ma'am. Um, thank you for having me here. We, uh, we want to focus on the safety of our kids. Obviously, that's why we, we meet, everyone meets, and that's our priority, um, overall. I will say that, um, the, the district itself handling any child and a group of children is a challenge in itself. And our community proves to be very challenging sometimes in dynamics and, and the problems that do happen in our community carry over. We had one incident only with, with gang incidents on, on, two Fridays ago, there was a gang incident out front, um, since we've been working on that and to take care of it. And we've had, you know, we have our altercations, which the safety officers are the first line of defense. They do the most work, to be honest. They're, they're constantly involved in, in building relationships, not only breaking of fights, but they really do build relationship with these kids. We rely heavily on their relationship to let us know what's going on. A lot of times, I'll ask them what's going on, um, in the community, because they know. And the fights that have occurred, usually, um, the majority of them have been female fights. And there have been a hand, a, a number of fights off the school itself property, which is George Daniel and Ashland Avenue. Um, the majority of them were at the parking lot after school, which, there's no reports. So to be transparent and truthful, there would not be a report from the police department, because by the time we show up, they break up and take off running. There's no victim, there's no one flagging the police down to say, hey, I just got beat up. It's a mutual agreement between the students to fight. And they'll meet after, you know, they'll say, hey, I'll meet you at George Daniel, and we'll fight. And they meet there, they fight. By the time, you know, the sirens, they hear them coming, they all take off running. So that's, that's the truth. Um, once they get to George Daniel, they'll take off running. So there's not going to be victims, there's not going to be actual, but there are calls. So that's something that the police department has an actual tracking of, where you could see the amount of calls to fights that have occurred. Um, you'll have parents calling, hey, there's a fight in progress at George Daniel. Those are numbers that we'd be able to quantify better than just speculation or, or, you know, word of mouth saying, hey, I heard there was a fight today. Some of them are verbal altercations, and again, and to clarify, I think, um, there was a mentioning, I, I was surrounded by 20 students and I was in fear of my life. I was not. Um, there were six kids that surrounded me in front of the building. They refused to leave. They were from the new, um, the success academy. They just didn't want to get off the property, they want to hang out, meet the kids. They didn't surround me, um, to kill me, I wasn't afraid of my life. But they, they were testing. They, they wanted to know, if they refused to leave, what was the police going to do? And as being a resident here, and as, as Chief Rivera said, I really care about these kids. And if anyone knows me, they know that I love the community. I really do. And I'm not going to put my hands on a, on a child and use force and hurt them over them refusing to leave the property. And I had, I did not do so. Other officers may have been able and been justified at that point. I did not. I kind of asked them to leave several times, and I think the last time, I kind of said, guys, um, this could get bad if you don't leave and you choose to walk towards me, to fight me. Because they had closed their distance, and I think at that point, they realized, whoa, officer, we're not going to touch you, our intent is not to fight you, um, we're going to leave. Because they realized that, um, they were backing me into, into my, towards my vehicle. Um, I think the, the statements got confused with the, the officer that was at George Daniel during a football game, and there was a fight, and they had surrounded his vehicle. And he, he didn't see a fight, because again, once he showed up, the fight had stopped. And they kind of mentioned to him, hey, um, what are you doing here? And he said, I thought there was a fight. No one got, no one was fighting, no one made a complaint. Um, however, once he cleared the group and pulled up to me, to talk to me, to ask me what happened at the game, um, someone ended up pulling out a gun and everyone took off. That was not reported, because no one called the police. We were not aware of that incident until the next day. Um, and it was an adult who was from the community, you know, off-site, was not a student from the school, who pulled the gun out. But they're trying. And I, I will be honest, that, that the community is testing, and when I say community, more of the gang community. Um, two adults did attempt to get into the building. That is true. They, they came to lunch, they had tried to get in. The safety, um, team was aware, they advised me that these people, they showed me pictures, these people are known gang members, and they're on Facebook showing guns. Um, and that was the gentleman that pulled the gun out at the George Daniel Stadium. They didn't gain entrance into the building. Um, the security, the secretary at the front stopped them, they left the building. But it just raises our, our heightened sense of security, and I've advised the safety team. You know, they're doing a great job. And I'll be honest, they really are. Our safety team is doing everything they can. They're getting, they're, they're, they're on the ground, they're listening, and they're constantly trying to be proactive to stop fights before happening. Um, to make sure that we're interjecting and we're sitting them down to talk to, to them beforehand. But, um, I think that that's, that's the best that I can give, like statistically, where I know a lot of people have asked me, um, the number of fights. You know, there is the reported number that Mr. Hardy has provided, which is true and accurate, from inside the building. And then there's the number of fights that have happened outside of the building that are not being reported, because they're off-site. But that would be something you would look towards the police department to get that number, which we can provide.
What is considered off-site?
Off-site, I, I say off-site, it's anything across the street of, off the property of Lorain High. So, from the entire, all of, anything that's off of the property itself of Lorain High School. So Ashland Avenue, um, any street.
As they're walking home.
Yeah, as they're walking home. Um, and George Daniel would be off-site, but yeah, it's still school property, to my understanding. Um, but it is off-site, because it didn't happen inside the building. So if you were to ask me, how many fights happened inside the building, I would say about 10, which is what was reported. If you'd asked me how many fights have happened in total on school property, it'd be closer to about 20. But again, there's not even police reports, because there's no victims. So we haven't identified them. Most of the time, the safety officers find out after a video is circulated, and someone Most of the time, the safety officers find out after a video is circulated, and someone will show us a cell phone video and say, hey, look, there was a fight last night, these two girls fought. We don't have any. But now, gang fights, we've had none. There have been no fights on school property or in the school that have been related to clear gang violence, other than two Fridays ago, where there was three separate groups at the school across the street. And they were easily identifiable. You could see them because they were separate. And they threw up their gang signs and did their thing, but they were handled. And as the chief echoed, it is progressive, it's moving in the right direction, where the school itself has suspended. So if there's a perception or rumors going around that they're not being suspended, that's not true. They are. It may not be to the effect or the policy that was, may have been previous. But the kids are being suspended. There, you can clearly look up those records and see. But there is a challenge. It's just a little bit of a challenge in getting them all to understand that we're not going to fight. Mr. Hardy did have a heart-to-heart with them this past week to say, look, guys, stop fighting, don't bring any of the off-street, you know, problems in the community to the school. If you do, there will be consequences. And that was a statement that was echoed through the students, which she even mentioned to me, like, I'm not fighting here, because I don't want to bring the drama. So that's about it.
How is our, I mean, so far, we talked primarily about the high school. Are grade schools and our junior highs or...
I, yeah.
Do you get any type of information on that?
I'm mostly, like I said, I'm mostly at the high school. Takes a lot of my time, because it's the most, obviously, the highest population in the buildings. But I haven't had any major issues at any of the elementaries. The most severe issues we've had have been external, where we locked down Admiral King a couple of weeks ago because of a gun call that was completely unrelated. It was down the street. So that was probably the most serious issue we've had. Middle schools, you know, Facebook drama, girls arguing, but nothing where it's to the point of the effect that I've had to go and handle. And honestly, I haven't had any drug calls in the school to date, which is a good thing. There's been no drugs issues here yet. Like I said, as of today, I haven't had any issues with that or any felonies, which mostly I handle the felonies and drugs, because the safety officers handle all the other issues. So I have not.
Since I've been on the board, I think I've been on board nine years. And we spent a lot of years trying to create this atmosphere, because the first thing that anybody wants to know is, is their child safe when they go to school? So we try to, and I'm hoping tomorrow, I'm hoping that your meeting goes well with Mr. Hardy, and I hope that everything's cooperative. But I guess I have to wait and see.
Overall, just to know, as a resource, I'm available. So if there's questions or things with specific families, like I heard the young lady express her concern for her child, I wasn't aware of that. I try to make myself available to be involved. So if you feel that someone needs to contact, send them to me, refer them to me. I am at the high school, they can meet me here, and I'll try to address and help them out as much as I can, working with the administration, which I think we're doing a pretty good job, communicating and hopefully be able to handle and resolve all the issues that the community has.
You know, the good thing about that is that she came and stood before us and told us about, she cares about her child, but she cares about all children. Okay, I mean, I don't think there's anybody that thinks that that's the way a classroom should be run. Sometimes you get new teachers and, you know, different circumstances. But I'm glad that we have parents like that out there, because I've always said that if you have a child, if you have a parent that's involved in your life in Lorraine City Schools, you may get a good education.
Thanks for what you do. We were, I think, pleased to hear that there was some thought process and implementation that changed over the last week. Because again, it was, we have a safe school district. But we could easily revert back to conditions that we tried very hard to alleviate. And that's kind of the direction that felt like, oh, here we go. You know, where people are saying it hasn't been this bad in years. But it sounds like there's been some change. And we hope that the meetings you all have tomorrow, in terms of the recommendations that you all are making, will continue to push us in that direction, so that we're having a different conversation in two weeks and going forward.
Thank you. Thank you guys both for being here.
The only other thing that I want to add is that it's really important, you know, when we had issues years ago, you can't centralize all your decision-making, you know? It's, you got to have your, give your safety officers, your principals, and the people, and the teachers, let them know what you expect of them, then like, give them the authority to do it. Because kids are real intuitive, and they'll pick up really quick if they notice that that, no matter how much they push that safety officer, nothing's being done. They pick up on that. If they see a school resource officer that doesn't make arrests, then they pick up on that. If they, you know, so you really got to support your people that are in the trenches, you know, your police officers, your safety officers, your principals, and your teachers. And let them make their decisions and stand by them when they make those decisions. That's critical to helping us do our jobs, so.
Thanks for being here. Is it busy? Thanks. All right, second hearing of the public.
All right, the next board meeting will be October 1st.
Did we have some other information that we get to? I wanted to ask, I wanted to ask.
Absolutely.
Can you tell me, we used to have a...
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. You said, is there anything from the public?
Yeah, yeah, there was a second.
I hadn't heard a response from Mrs. Jane Rice's quest. Now, is somebody on the board supposed to address that? Supposed to give an answer to her question? I would like to hear that, from somebody on the board.
Typically, we try not to engage in dialogue like that, but certainly, I know the request was made, and I know that somebody aboard, somebody from the board will get back to Ms. Rice and Ms. Lee on their concerns.
So you have to go, you said, public, you're going to get back to her personally?
Correct. The hearing of the public is an opportunity for the public to talk about their concerns and their issues. It's really not board dialogue, question and answer time. It really is to hear from the public.
Thank you.
A question from board members?
Could you tell, could you tell me, we used to have a, have a program, a couple programs that were, could you tell me if they're still being funded or not? I heard they were, the NASA program at Longfellow, where we partnered with NASA. Do we still have that?
I don't think I've even seen anything come through for it. So I'll double check on it.
Okay, also, they had a robotics program for the, I mean, we were doing like, in the world and all that stuff. Did we not have a robotics program anywhere?
We have robotics. Actually, I'm sitting down with Tim John tomorrow morning to discuss their budget, to make sure they have proper funding, actually.
But I'm talking about the junior high school?
It used to be at Longfellow, right?
Like Longfellow.
I believe that, I believe that the person that runs it runs both. So I think it would probably, it's like the overall program itself for robotics.
Because that was, I mean, we were pretty good at that. That was a pretty big deal to...
I know that the intent was to continue that program. And I'm sitting down, I guess I'll sit down with Tim and the...
But the NASA program, you don't think is...
I won't say I don't think. I'm just saying, I haven't seen it come across my desk just yet. If there's any sort of a contract or a payment that comes through because of it, or if it's just a partnership, I'd have to look.
Or if we even still have it.
Or if we still have it, yeah, I'm not sure of that.
Could you ask that question?
I'll check into it, yeah. I'll let you guys know.
And one piece of information that I was sharing, I got a second call from, or quite a few calls, a conversation with Dr. Mary Rice, the East Cleveland School Board of Education, a member there. And they had a retreat that they'd invited us to. And some of us are going to be out of town, and we can have to send that around to board members, I think. But on next Monday, they've invited us, especially since we came to the retreat, to their board meeting. And I plan on going. They, all their board members came to our board meeting when we were going into our second phase of distress. And so, they wanted to be supportive, and they came, along with other administrators and members of their community came along with them. And so, they are on the brink of being under state control via House Bill 70. And so, they really would like to hear from us. I think Youngstown and a few other districts are going to be at their retreat.
What time is the meeting?
The meeting is on, and let me see if she sent me something with the meeting agenda. And if she did, I will forward it to you all for that. She was going to email me when she got home, when we see if we came in.
And while you're looking at that, Youngstown also invited us to their October 9th. I would really like to attend, but I'll be in Indianapolis for a few days. So I won't be able to attend, but it'd be great to have some kind of representation there. She asked, because they're setting the agenda. So I told her I would ask you guys tonight and let her know if anybody's going to be able to attend.
So it's Saturday, right?
October 9th? No, I don't think so. I think that's a Thursday, maybe?
First is a Monday, so seventh, another Monday, I think, Wednesday.
Wednesday, Thursday? October 9th is a Tuesday.
All right, I'll see if I can think I should...
That'd be great.
And if we want to, to most want to go right together or whatever.
I know, you said if somebody else is going, you go as well. That'd be great if we can get some folks there.
So that one's Tuesday, and then the, I believe it's Monday, the 24th, that is the East Cleveland.
East Cleveland. And do you know what time that is?
No, as soon as I get it, I will share it with everybody.
And the only thing I'm going to ask is, I saw that the district reported at one point in time, an increase of over 800 students. Then I followed it up with an increase of over 200 students. And then I heard at the town hall that it was said that we have a decrease of 300 students. Do we have a somewhat accurate count of where our enrollment is? I mean, that's a pretty big difference, right?
Yeah, and I know that right now, EMIS, Don Dresky, they are addressing it and just trying to finalize that number. That's what I told Bill, because he had requested clear EMIS data. And as soon as, I think she does, she didn't feel comfortable at the moment, because she's doing so many ins and outs, that she said, once it settles down, I'll bring you guys a...
So why are we announcing enrollment if we don't know?
I don't know.
Okay. That's a big difference. 800 increase to 300 decrease.
I would like to say that since they're having that meeting tomorrow at 8 o'clock with our CEO about safety, as soon as we can invite him back, I would like to have a summary of that information, so that we can get behind our police chief and do as much as possible to have positive action, so that Lorraine will not have a negative attitude and spread that to the community in Channel 5 about us having such a horrific community environment.
That is fair, and if it's okay with the chief, I'll either call him or he can give me a call after his meeting. Let us know how it went. Chief, we're talking about your meeting and for tomorrow, and, you know, as Javon was asking, it'd be good if we could know how that meeting goes, so that we can get behind you and support you in any way we can.
Yeah, I think you have to report to the head. And I said, we'd be happy to hold, you know, everybody comes together, and we close the door and just have an honest discussion.
Great, thank you. Any others? Okay, next board meeting is October 1st, right here, 5 o'clock. Motion to adjourn.
So will support.
Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Valley?
Yes.
Mr. Demakia?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Ward?
Yes.
This has been a production of Lorraine City Schools TV20 WLCS.